Run downstairs. I'll take the field.
Okay.
Make sure the stream is locked.
Thank you. You need me to stick for the whole thing?
Well, I was gonna say about moving like thirty minutes once you get it going.
I took the...
Well, there's one there, one there, and one here.
Couple back in the corner.
I think that's it.
I wonder how many of these guys think that tip and sale is supposed to be. That's my question. You know, we come in the pen. It's just not like solid all the way.
Couple back in the corner.
I wonder how many of these guys think that tip and sale is supposed to be. That's my question. You know, we come in the pen. It's just not like solid all the way.
Couple back in the corner.
I wonder how many of these guys think that tip and sale is supposed to be. That's my question. You know, we come in the pen. It's just not like solid all the way.
Couple back in the corner.
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 I wonder how many of these guys think that tip and sale is supposed to be. That's my question. You know, we come in the pen. It's just not like solid all the way.
Couple back in the corner.
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 To address that issue.
Anybody got questions for Blake? Is the applicant here, would you like to speak? Understand the same, understand the same issue with the voting. You state your name and address, please, for the record. But just to reiterate, same thing. One no, and it does not pass, puts you in a position to have to go through the appeal process to the court and all that.
Can you explain the, I'm sorry, Nathan Street with McClellan Consulting Engineers. Could you explain the appeal process if it were to be voted down this evening and what that timeframe?
Blake, you're saying you want to handle that?
Yes. Normally the appeal, we contact the coordinate, the court coordinator to make sure like when they will have like this project on the agenda. And let's say like we decided the date, we have to notify the same neighbors we notified prior to that project twenty days before, and we all like come to the planning, to the court and court, and it will be, you, we present the same presentation in front of the JPs, fifteen of them, and they make the decision, they either like to, either like approve, like the denial or the approval. In both cases, if you get denied or approved, the public also like have the chance to go on like appeal that decision. But it won't be the planning board, it's all going to be the court after that.
I believe.
How many, how many members are we missing?
Three.
And are we guaranteed?
We've got one that just had something come up with work that couldn't make it. We've got one with an ailment and other gentleman out of town. So there's normally, there's normally seven. I'm not sure Brian has, the judge appointed a new person to take my spot for next month, because this is my last meeting. Okay, so there would be six. But because it's a board of seven, it would still require four next month, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, the, the four of you would count as?
Yeah, in order for it to pass tonight, it takes all four of us. Or you come back next month and it's going to be six people voting that, it could be seven if he, if he appoints somebody to fill my spot before next month's meeting, then it could be seven people here then. It'd still take four, but you'll have seven people that will be voting instead of just four.
I believe my client's predicament is a pending closing on the property, so a one-month delay is a pretty good wrench in the system. I'm sure it's not prudent or appropriate to ask if we could get a preliminary vote to know if we need to table or not.
Uh, no.
And in the process, if it doesn't pass tonight to, to appeal or reapply?
It's an appeal process.
It's an appeal process.
Yes, sir. So you have the option to move forward or table it, or cancel the project altogether.
And I think it's based on, on when you appeal, Sam, and then the number of days that you have to, in order to resend out the notifications in order to, to be on.
Yeah, and there's no guarantee it's going to be on the court and court like next month. It might be February.
If all of that doesn't fall in place, then it may not be next month, but it could be the next month's meeting. So it could be a month and a half down the road.
Yep.
And again, I apologize, I apologize to the people that are here. And I apologize to y'all for, you know, there's four of us, you know, sometimes things happen.
I think we feel pretty positive about what we have going, and we feel that it's going to be a plus to our community, and so.
Move forward?
I think we'll move forward.
Okay. All right, then you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Yes, Nathan Street, McClellan Engineers, fifteen eighty East Stern Street Fayetteville. Blake, thank you for the introduction on the project. We are proposing, you know, six and a half acres of self-storage. With the future potential to have two residential lots greater than one acre via lot split along Mallywaggon Road. The storage units will be phased, the fourteen total structures will be phased throughout construction, and also incur, have a small office building. Security is to the utmost importance to my clients, as well as screening to the neighbors. The, the facility will have a mechanical gate, and hours of operation where, as Blake stated on the slides, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, one question, because typically when we look at storage facilities or with gates or twenty-four hours, how do you restrict, it's just the power's off on the gate, you don't have access during those hours, how does that work?
And ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Jody Harris, one eight seven five eight Duncan Road Fayetteville. We, we currently operate a self-storage facility, and all of that is programmed from a computer inside of our office, and so it restricts your gate access by, by a gate code. So you can come in at seven fifty and unload your stuff and still get out of our gate, but at eight oh one, that gate shuts down to only emergency access, and that would be the police and fire.
One other question, if I could, please. The office building that's being built, is that for a manager of this project? And if so, what are the hours of operation until there'll be somebody on site?
As stated earlier in the project, it's from nine to five Monday through Friday, and that would be a facility just for the office manager to sign leases and do rental payments.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll open it up to public comment, so again, if anybody's got anything to say in reference to this project, state your name and address, and then I'll keep you on a three-minute time limit.
Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Peter Reagan, I am the neighbor to the north. My house sits approximately sixty feet off the property line. I operate a small twenty-acre cattle farm on that property with a shop and, and a hay barn. One, one question that I have, and I don't know who to direct the questions to, but I submitted my comments to, to Mr. Chapman, but I, I don't have answers, and I'm, I'm going to read them here tonight and hopefully get some answers. On, on the drawing, I don't see the fence line for the security fence. Currently, there's a five-strand barbed wire, some places there's four, but most places there's five for my cattle. Is, is that chain-link fence going to be on the inside of that, or is it going to be replaced? The next question I have is there's a well located on the property, the proposed property, which is next to my driveway by the Black Hills Gas Company gate, and, and there's no mention of that in, in any of these drawings. Let's talk about groundwater flow. We know there's a, to the, flow to the northwest. I have had water over my driveway washing out the SB two that was put in and packed properly from, from heavy rains. The proposed water flow actually flows to the corner of this proposed property, which is also my corner. That's where my culvert is located. With the additional roof lines, there's going to be additional water flow into that corner. And I don't think that brand-new eighteen-inch culvert is going to be able to handle that. So who is, who's the responsible party to ensure that if something does happen there, that it, the, the problem is taken care of? The next is, is the groundwater that flows to the northeast, which is where my corral is located. It, it, it just happens that it's there. Today, I measured it, we had an inch and sixty-two hundredths of rainfall within the last twenty-four hours. I had four inches of water running through the entrance between this property and my property flowing to the Evan House's property, and it was a pretty good flow. I took some pictures of it, if, if y'all want to see that. The retention pond, I, I understand how they're supposed to work. I, I have a neighbor that, that had to put one in, his neighbor had to put one in because of development, and the water goes around that retention pond and flows on his property. And I cut that property for hay, so I know how wet it is, and you don't get a first cutting off, off that property because it's so wet. So who is responsible when that type of problem does, or that, that type of building or engineering doesn't work? Who, who's responsible for that, or the county to make sure that the property owners fix the problem and, and hold the water and not run it off on, on the neighbors?
Sir, I'm going to have to get a, to wrap it up, I've already given you more than three minutes.
I'm already over three minutes?
Yes, sir, you sure are.
I have questions about the lighting, I have the, the security fence on the chain-link fence, and I, I looked at the, the project that the, the current applicant's own, and they put the, the V barbed wire, three-strand barbed wire on each side, and I would request that on the north boundary line, which borders my property. The other thing is, is the, the increased traffic. We all know the problem where it comes off, where Mallywaggon goes south off Highway sixteen, two cars can't pass there, we're going to have increased traffic. We've got school buses, we've got semi-trucks, and it is a problem.
All right, thank you, sir. Next.
I see two faces, I haven't seen them in quite a while.
You state your name and address, please.
My name's Larry Nixon, two six six four South Van Hooes Drive. How are you? I'll take off where Pete kind of stopped. One of the things is that, that is my old family land out there. It is residential, it is agriculture, it was not meant for anything else to be put out there. The chip and seal road that's out there, we all know how long that lifespan is on that chip and seal, the county replaces them every seven, eight years. We've already proved that by going up to Ammons and looking up with all the top of that gone. The biggest thing that most of the people around the, the top of the hill have is light pollution. Well, all of the houses around there, we sit down on, below the, the mountain. This is right down below the full curve of the mountain going all the way to Lake Sequoia, and everybody on the ridge up there that bought houses for a beautiful view is going to look down at a parking lot. There's, this thing is probably, I don't know how many totaled units, but I'm going to guess just from what I'm looking at, it's about six hundred. Six hundred with the light pollution at night, and you're sitting in your backyard up there, and you're looking to the north, I tell you, you can't see anything but a parking lot. And everybody is totally upset around the mountain up there because of what this pertains to in a storage facility, and we are residential agri down there, and we're in individual housing down there. We had a hiccup here a while back when I crossed the road, but it's been alleviated. Outside of that, all of the houses from all the way around up and all the way around to, to going down the hill on the other side, has a view of this storage facility. And we don't want to watch it, we don't want to look at it, we don't need it. The, and as far as their estimates of traffic for that many units, there's one car per unit. If you rent it, the ones we've done over on Burt Street and the ones we've done everywhere else on those, you get one car and it comes about one point two people per, or cars per units, number of units. The highest traffic is in the mornings and then after work, and I mean to tell you, they day-flat fill it up. We have about forty in about four hundred units. So you can multiply that on down the road. The, the entrance down there, the first three hundred feet, as y'all know, is city, and you can't, you can't pass, you have to pull over, let one car through, pull over, let the other car through. You get, you get a kind of accustomed to it with all of the, the lives that's up on the hill, they have kids, they've all grown up. We have an abundance of traffic up there right now. There's people goes through there two or three cars deep. You can't, you can't hardly get a school bus, you can't get anything through there, and that is city property. I don't think you all have anything to do with the city property. Right now, the three hundred feet is probably highway property, because they're going to redo the highway in twenty forty, is what I'm told. And so, you know, right now, it's just, it's, it's, it's hung, and there's no way to get around it. There's, there's only, in the winter, there's only one way out, and that's down the west hill. You can't go down the east hill, it'll be blocked off, it's slick, you run right out in the road. So you only have one way in and out. So I, I would like you all to listen and, and think about the, the situation we're in to look and try to mitigate the people on top of that hill. We are on top of the hill.
Larry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
That's fine, Joel, I, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, guys.
I bet you, sir. Next.
My name's Evan House, six zero seven three East Huntsville Road, I'm a neighbor to the northeast. I appreciate y'all hearing us tonight. Several of the issues I have have been addressed, water runoff, I'm to the northeast, a lot of that water flows through there, and currently in the spring, it's almost impassable, and I, I have concerns that once that retention pond fills up, water in equals water out, and I, I just think that it'll flow right out once it gets full. So I don't want to take any more time on that. Same with light pollution, although our personal view, we're on the same level, we're not up on the hill, so for us, it's more about, you know, the night sky, so the neighbors down in the, the bottom there are more concerned about that, but same concerns there. Traffic has been addressed, I feel like, but same concerns there. My biggest issue is with the application itself, I, I don't feel like it is in general compatible with the surrounding area. My concerns of the three examples that were used is that these examples are all three on Highway sixteen or to the north, they're in the city of Fayetteville, they're not a, a half mile down a narrow residential street, and I am concerned that if they're allowed to be used for examples, that that further opens the door for more commercial, and that this storage facility, if approved, would be able to be used as an example for continuing projects down the road, and we would just really prefer to keep this area residential, quiet. Property value as well, my family, as well as many of the neighbors, may not be concerned directly with the actual dollar value of the property, although I don't speak for everyone when I say that. You know, this is our forever home, and we prefer to keep the property residential so that our children can grow up in the same way that we did there. And also, in reference to item four on the application, I do feel like the project impedes normal and orderly development. Kind of building on what I said before, feels like this opens the door to other commercial properties, which I feel like further devalues the residential properties in the area. So again, with this being an area comprised of homes and small farms, I respectfully ask that you deny the application and help keep our neighborhood this way. So that'd be brief, that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Excuse me, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Bobby Sexton, we live at eighteen twenty-four South Mallywaggon Road. We own the property that adjoins this piece of property, we're to the south side. There has been water flow from the top of that mountain, comes across and under Mallywaggon Road, flows down into a branch that has been there, well, my husband was born on the property in eighty, in, he's eighty-three years old. So this branch has been running there for years. It runs across our property, we sent one of these in, I don't know if you've seen it, it runs across our property, across the property that they are talking about developing, and it goes back to the corner of Evan House, our property, and Pete's. We have springs all in that property, year-round, there is water standing on that property. When you put that much cement, and I'm a nervous wreck, I'm sorry, when you put that much cement down, it is going to cause flooding on our property. There's no way around it. The retention pond hopefully will take some of it, but I think what it's going to do is divert the, the flow of the water, the natural flow. It's going to run it down the side of their property, which will be built up in asphalt, and back completely on us and flood us. And, as I say, we have tried very hard to keep that residential. We have seventy acres there that is undeveloped, and we want to keep it that way, we're trying to keep it a neighborhood for families. And children are playing out in yards, and you increase that traffic, it's bad now. There are bikers, hikers, there are walkers on that road daily for exercise because it is a community, and they feel safe. Please just think about the residents there and decline this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Don Cox, live at two zero five nine South Mallywaggon Road, which would be across from Pete, but pretty close to this property. Pretty much everything has been covered that I was going to talk about. The water flow, there's another stream that runs behind my house that connects down on sixteen also. With just heavy rains last April, our pool almost flooded due to the backup of the water. If you put this much water flow coming from the east side to the west side, it's going to do the same thing, it's going to back up, down, it can't get out fast enough across sixteen. And it's, it will flood my, my pool. Small children, I have two small children, they play in the road all the time, ride a four-wheeler up and down out in the woods that they're talking about. This is not a, I'm not for against it, but it's not a project for a residential area that we live in. Don't believe that it is good for the city because you'll, or the county, you'll limit the potential residentials coming into the area, which is going to hurt your revenue in the future for real estate taxes. The project itself would be better in a high-visibility area, like on sixteen, like their other project, not in a residential agricultural area. And I guess that's about all I have to say. I would like for y'all to go out to the Mallywaggon Road, experience the entrance, that first three hundred feet that they're talking about, almost got hit today by a FedEx truck, not paying attention, coming back from lunch, and it happens regularly in that little section there. The neighbors themselves are all great about waving somebody on and stopping, but you get six hundred-plus people coming through, however often they're going to come through, and there's no telling what you get. Not to mention the house next door that we've just, is alleviating itself, there's been some burglaries, all kinds of different things going on in that. You bring in the residential or the storage facility, you're going to attract more crime to the area as well. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Jason Gallant, we and my family are property owners at twenty-six seventy-seven South Van Hooes Drive. We would overlook this proposed storage unit. We are opposed for this facility to be built at the base of Bear Mountain, similar to many of the reasons that my neighbors have stated. We currently have a beautiful tree view of Lake Sequoia and the neighboring acreage. I'm concerned with this storage facility will not only diminish the landscape, but, as said, create nighttime light pollution, lower property values, create noise and constant activity in an area that has been zoned agricultural and single-unit residential. Furthermore, as many have talked about, the stormwater is absolutely, should be a concern. It's going to take a lot of concrete and asphalt to build a storage facility of that size. The amount of runoff that flows directly onto the proposed site is significant, and once they remove all of that vegetation, it'll just further exacerbate the problem. Additionally, we got access to city water, but not sewer, so I'm assuming the septic there would have to be significant as well. And then lastly, I thought I would just mention that if this storage facility is approved and may inevitably go out of business due to like a poor demand study, or perhaps one not even done at all, seeing as this proposed site is well off the road in a residential area, I think it would permanently diminish the landscape. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, Tanya Patrick, I live at twenty-eight oh one South Leo Ammons Road. I believe my husband, W.H. Taylor, had already submitted some common, comments in the form of a letter. We live on Leo Ammons, which would be above the subject property, but he failed to mention that we also own a small home, actually at sixteen ninety Mallywaggon, which would be north, north of Pete and north of the subject property. As you're coming downhill there and you get to my parcel and then the parcel that's just north of mine, we don't even have any culverts, it flattens out so much down there, there's not even any culverts in our driveways. And right now, if there's any amount of rain, just due to there's been a couple really nice houses built on our side of the road, just the driveways that they've put in and really nice culverts, man, it sends the water sailing down there. I mean, it, it, you know, you could go down there and wade in it, we got white caps rolling. And then also, behind our small house on Mallywaggon, we have the creek or the small branch that Ms. Sexton, that she mentioned, and everything flows to that. So I've got water in the front, excuse me, and water in the back, and I can't handle any more water on this house. I mean, the rains that we get in, I think Pete mentioned, you know, in the spring and up through July, I mean, it's just incredible to go out there, you're driving, you know, in the rain and, and it's way too much water, and I can promise you, I don't care what kind of retention pond, detention pond that y'all put in this, I have some of experience with storage facilities, I used to be a bank lawyer, and they all have an incredible amount of runoff that will not be fully remediated by any sort of retention pond. And the land just gets lower and lower and lower as you go toward the road. And I mean, the, we can't take any more water, and, and they would have to make improvements, I would think, substantial improvements to the road itself, the ditches, maybe put some tin whistles in or culverts, and to people who are on down, you just can't push all this water on, you know, water rolls downhill like a lot of things, I guess. But anyway, I would just, you know, my husband and I would be earnestly opposed to this every step of the way, because this just doesn't fit in this neighborhood. We like our barns, we like our farms, we like our little outbuildings, we live in the county because of that. So anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I have a question. My husband and I moved, I'm sorry. Ginger Nicholson, my husband Ed and I moved out there about four years ago and loved the place, you know, needless to say, we want the view and all this, but if there, if a commercial entity like this comes to our neighborhood, who's going to come tell them, oh, you said you were going to close at eight o'clock, and now you're opening till midnight, and we have all this noise? What agency enforces that, their, their word, that they're going to have these hours and do these things? Also, I used to work for the beautification program at the highway department. Screening something like this, when you've got hills, and it's impossible, you know, so screening doesn't mitigate any of the eyesore. We're all very happy out in that neighborhood. We looked for five years after our kids went to college to find a neighborhood where the scenery's beautiful, the neighbors are wonderful people, and please don't ruin that for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Kent Burnett, I live just to the north of Pete Reagan's place. I retired several years ago, I guess you can probably tell from looking, and I had a farm out in Madison County. My wife and I needed to get closer to town because of doctors and one thing and another, and so we sold our place out there and looked for a long time to try to find something that I could keep a few cows. I need, I'm a person that needs something to do, I need to have something to keep me busy. And so I bought some land from Jim and Bobby Sexton, so I'd be able to, and, and I thought, you know, this is probably where I'll build, I used to be a builder, I'll build my last house, I'd like to have a place that I can keep a few cows, a quiet neighborhood, and one that's, I'm not, my house is not going to lose value where I'm, where I want to be, because I realize that what- Because I realize that what's around you makes the value of your house up or down. And the, you know, in my opinion, you know, you can say what you want to about how much traffic it's going to create, but if you want to see what it's like, go out there and try to get out on 16 from seven to eight o'clock of a morning. And, you know, when, if I'm pulling a trailer, turn off of 16, the only way you can get turned off and walk through there is if somebody's kind enough to stop back ways and let you get off the highway. It is, the traffic is way, way heavy now, and, you know, if there's 500 units, there's going to be a lot of people going in and out of there. And I, I think that something would really need to be done to the road before they would be any type of a facility go in that would create that kind of traffic. You know, I know the water problems, if, the water's probably not going to affect me, but it's going to Evan and Pete. And, and I would just like to keep it as a agriculture residential area, which I, when I bought there three years ago, I mean, that's what I looked for. I didn't look for something, you know, you can, you can take storage facilities, you go around about any of them around here, they start out pretty nice with people keeping stuff inside. But there's lots of them that there's junk cars parked out in areas that, if it's not controlled some way or another. And I don't know what your, you know, the county has any plans. I haven't seen, you know, too much control of that kind of thing just across the road from that for several years. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Mike Valdez, I live at 2646 South Van Hooch Drive. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time repeating what these folks have said because they've all brought some very good points. I'm new to the area, I've lived there about two years, and I've fallen in love with that area, done some research on what public storage facilities, what kind of impact and issues that they can bring to the community that they're built in. The one thing that I have not heard anybody really touch on, and I got in just as Mr. Nixon was talking, so if it's already been addressed, I apologize, haven't heard anybody say anything about the, the increase in crime. The storage facilities are popular with thieves and people and strangers looking around to see what they can take and break into. I, for one, am not, I'm opposed to this. I hope that you guys listen to everybody's comments. It's a wonderful community, a lot of good people, and we hope that you guys take all this into consideration and vote against it.
Anyone else?
My name's Mason Roma, and I'm at 2643 Van Hooch Road. I'm up on the hill with the view overlooking what you guys are proposing. I couldn't be any more opposed to this planned rezoning. The primary reason I moved out there was the same reason everybody behind me sounds like they did, the tight-knit community, the sense of a rural atmosphere when you're just minutes away from Fayetteville. And I'm very concerned that you guys would be robbing that if you decide to proceed with this. My other big concern is increasing traffic on Highway 16. They touched on this earlier, turning out there, but in my opinion, Highway 16 right now is not currently safe as a two-lane road. Any decision you guys make that increases traffic is a bad decision, in my opinion. I have to turn out on that road every morning at seven, 7:30, and every morning is a danger and a scare to me to do that. So the thought of increasing traffic significantly there is a big concern to me and my neighbors. And above all, I think it does a community feel out there, and this decision would greatly impact that, and I would ask you guys to consider keeping it the way it is because that's the way the community wants it. That's it.
Rick Lambert, I live at 2600 South Van Hooch. I'll make it real quick, I'm not going to talk about the water, safety and all that. I want to talk about the kids. We have the neatest thing up on that mountain. Every time it snows or an ice storm, every kid from the neighborhood, from the surrounding neighborhoods gets their little, what do you call them things?
Sleds.
Sleds. And are up here on top of the mountain with all the parents, and we blocked the road down the bottom where the four-wheelers and everything. These kids slide up and down this mountain all day on ice and snow. And this facility is going right there in that path. So these kids will never get to play on this mountain in the snow or in ice. That's a lot to take away. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, would the applicant like to respond to any of the questions?
It's okay, we'll, we'll both kind of double up on this one. My name's Nathan Harris, this is my wife, Jody Harris, and we are the applicants. And first of all, I appreciate everybody coming up here, and I understand concerns, and I've talked to a couple of y'all before, and we hopefully, hopefully we can address a lot of these concerns because we've been through this before and had the same, a lot of the same concerns. And we've got, you know, several neighbors that are other facility that I would promise you each one of them would vouch for it, that we've been good neighbors and we've done everything we've said we were going to do at that one. I think you know Richard Fritz, and y'all know Richard Fritz. No doubt in my mind that he'd, he'd vouch for, we've got a good facility over there, we run it right, we're safe, we're, we are secure, and, and we don't cause any harms to the neighbors. Currently, our facility has Richard on one side of us, and we have probably 30-something neighbors on the other side with a residential.
Mobile home.
Mobile home part. And I, I can't think of one time we've had any issues with the neighbors. And so I've got a list here, if I miss anything, we can, you know, feel free to let me know, and we'll, we'll go over it. But starting off with the fencing, originally when we built that one in Fayetteville, you know, the city wanted a six-foot.
Wooden fence.
Wooden privacy fence around it. And we said, no, we don't want to do that. We, we're, we live in Arkansas, it's humid, wooden privacy fence turns into a rotten wooden privacy fence. What we'd like to do is put a chain-link fence up and plant, you know, shrubbery around it that covers it. And I think you saw some pictures of what we have currently. That's our plan with this one, is to, is to be able to cover it with something natural that blends in with the, the community. The, as far as the fencing up against your barbed wire fence, if the chain-link fence, if we need a different kind of a fence over there for cattle, you know, we're all in. We, we'll work with the neighbors on whatever kind of fencing we want to put up. But as far as the traffic, so we have a current, our current facility is roughly about 240 units, and it's, it's, it stays full. The, the computer system and the gate system we have, we can track who comes in that gate, what time they come in the gate, what time they leave the gate, how many, how many cars are in there, how long they stayed in there, you know? And so we know exactly how many people are coming and going. And I think the numbers we put out there was anywhere from zero to 12 people on average come through there in a day. And you think about, that's a big facility, you've got 250 renters coming and going, that, that's not the case. They, it's amazing how many people bring their stuff in, leave it there, and, and, you know, may not come back for a year. There, there's a few people that we have that, you know, that come and go, but for the most part, those are the numbers, and we can give the real numbers, you know, on that facility.
We can pull reports based on.
For the whole last year.
For the whole last year. There's some peak times when we have a lot of move-ins, especially in May and in August because we get a lot of student traffic from the university. But for the most part, it's actually shocking to us how little people come back. They just pay their rent every month and they don't, they don't come back and check on their stuff or put things in or take things out.
So that's kind of the traffic. You know, the other side of the traffic, when we talk about traffic on Highway 16, when we put our facility in in 2016 or 17.
It was 17 when we finished it.
So, you know, and it was supposed to be 2018 that the state was going to come through there in four-lane Highway 16 to help off with that traffic, because there is a tremendous amount of traffic on Highway 16. And, you know, that's still in the, in the, the grand plan is to come through there in four-lane that, that highway all through there. And, you know, the front 300 feet that, that is in the city, and I think that, that'll take care of a lot of that when they come through there with the, with the four-lane. And I, I don't know, somebody said 2040, but I think it's probably sooner than that. But that, that the, that the county, that the state is planning on and has that in the master plan to four-lane Highway 16 to take care of a lot of that traffic.
The lighting. We went through the same, the same issue when we built our first facility. Light pollution was a concern because we had residential neighbors on both sides of us, and so we chose a more expensive lighting because it was, it was downlighting to cut down on light pollution to avoid being nuisance to the neighbors.
And, and all that lighting had to go in front of the large-scale development to be approved. And, you know, we want enough lighting there to, it's all, you know, LED soft light that's, you know, aims down at the ground and, you know, pretty much just lights up the perimeter where you can walk around the facility. There's nothing shining up in the air that's going to, you're going to see from above or that's going to shine in anybody's lights up on top of the mountain. You know, the reason for the lighting at night is, you know, for the security to where, you know, it's, it lights it up to where you can, you know, see to walk around there. The security side of it, we've got, you know, state-of-the-art security cameras that, all around the facility, and, you know, that's one of our selling points to our customers is you can bring your stuff here, it's going to be safe, it's going to be locked down, and it's, and we, we have security cameras around to watch everybody's move that comes in and goes in here. You know, the other side of the security, you know, we want security, you know, we, we get somebody that backs into our, our wall or a door or damages something, we can go back and look at our own security. And so we, we're very, you know, vigilant about our security systems because, you know, we want to watch our, our facility. We can, you know, watch it from our iPhone 24 hours a day if there's any movement at all over there.
Hey, sir, I hate to interrupt you, but I ask you to approach the questions. You're appealing.
Okay, so let's go back.
Yeah, so that's, that's security.
Okay, so one, one thing that was brought up was demand and it being out of business. The reason that we're building this is because we already own a facility and it's full, and there is a high demand in this area. Last year, we turned more business away, and so did most of our competitors, so there is a demand for this. Another question that was brought up was about like junk cars and, and things that kind of make this facility look trashy. It behooves us to keep up our buildings and to keep the facility looking nice and secure because people aren't going to want to store their belongings with us if we have things like that. So as business owners who've been doing this for five years, we don't allow that. And then the other thing that was brought up a lot was the groundwater. And I know in our first project, when we, when we put in the ponds, it basically solved some of the drainage issues for all the residential neighbors around us. And when our project was over budget because of that, but we had to do it right. We got one shot at engineering that, you know, to make our facility nice, but also to solve some drainage problems for the surrounding area.
And, and, and the drainage problems that they thought they were going to have, it actually improved the drains around that, our land and around the neighbors.
And they made sure that we did that, and I think that's part of being a good steward of the area.
And our engineer could probably talk a little bit better about it, but, you know, that retention pond is, is designed to hold, you know, X amount of hours of rainwater, and it releases it out. Our current one releases out in a four-inch pipe, and that's all it releases out, so it may fill up with, you know, I don't know how many gallons it is, but it's, it's a lot. And then it drains out over the next couple of days at a slow rate. So, and, and that's all.
Okay.
Designed to work right, and we're going to, we're going to make sure it's designed right and works right where we don't, we don't have problems with.
I think the only thing that I would want to add, we made this list of, of all the issues that, that some of the neighbors had, had brought up, but I think that when we came in to the place that we are now, operating our current facility, there were similar concerns, and we worked very hard with the neighbors to resolve all those concerns. And to this day, they would say that we've come in and improved the property, and we've been good neighbors and good stewards of, of the properties around us.
And the other thing.
Whether it's a tree down or cleaning up trash and just, you know, keeping the area looking nice.
And, and we intentionally talked about putting some residential on the front of that to, to shade the neighborhood from, from the commercial, if you will, type facility behind it. You know, anybody can drive by, and I'm sure everybody has, our east side self-storage on Highway 16, it's a nice place. We, it's, it's beautiful. If you go around and find the storage complexes, it's the best-looking one in northwest Arkansas. So, and, and we've done a good job, keep it up. We planted 500-something pine trees around it to, you know, over the next few years, it's going to shade that, so a lot of the, the, the concerns of having to look at buildings.
And I think there was another person that brought up accountability on, oh, well, they say they're going to operate between hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. for their gate. You know, we've held ourselves accountable to that, and, and we, our customers complain about it. They would like 24/7 access, and we don't allow that because we made a, a commitment with our neighbors that, you know, after 8:00 p.m., you don't need in and out of here because we have to be respectful of the people who live around us.
All right. Is that it?
I think so.
I think that addresses it.
Unless we didn't cover something.
I mean, is there something that we didn't cover?
No, 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 we're good with that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
When it comes to lighting, we do have planning, we always like provide the applicant with the permitted type of lights that they can use. Most of the times, it has to be pointing down, not shining out, and most, most of the time people look right now using like LED soft lights with like timers on them so they can't turn on and off, like on and off based on like motion, so.
Okay. All right, if there's any other questions, it's to the board. I will iterate it without a motion. I can't proceed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how the other members of the board feel about this, so in order to find out, I'm going to make a motion and we can vote it, vote on it. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve this Mallywaggin self-storage SCUP, and see what happens.
I'm going to get a motion. Brian, I have a motion. If I don't receive a second, does that mean it fails? Okay. All right, there's no sense stalling. I mean, we've got a motion, we don't have a second, so with that, I'll leave it that the motion failed. If I'm. If everybody, Sam, if you'll explain to the, to the owners there, what they can do going forward as far as their appeal process.
Brian, do you have any? Okay. So basically it failed, it didn't move forward. So like you re, you most likely need to reapply again for the same project, same location.
Or you can appeal to the court.
Yes, or you can appeal to the court.
Yeah. That's like, yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
You can appeal it and it's the same process. We need to contact the, we need to contact the court, like the court and court and make sure like when they're gonna add this to the appeal, which agenda it's gonna be into. And we'll notify you and we'll notify the neighbors twenty days before that. So you have like a choice. You either can like just cancel like the project or like appeal it to the court or reapply again. It's up to you. As for now, it's basically.
Is that good? Sorry, we're good?
Yep.
All right.
So you either reapply or like.
Either reapply or appeal to the court. So I'll give everybody a minute that was here for that to clear out before we proceed with the rest of the meeting.
I'm gonna just say that one more time. So if you're gonna appeal to the court, you have thirty-day window from today. Contact me. So I'll provide you with the information or like the form that you need to fill. And it has to be, it has to be recorded with the county clerk, second floor, it's exactly above us, within thirty days. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we can't do anything until that thirty days like passes. Thank you.
Everybody, if I could ask those that are in, hello, 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 hello. Attention, if I could ask, ladies and gentlemen, if you're a part of that and you want to, if you want to speak outside and discuss that with everybody, that would be great. We've still got a meeting to conduct here. For those that are still here, give me just two seconds and we'll get this rolling again. All right, I'm not gonna wait on Sam. Blake will handle this. So with that, we're moving to the Greenland Planning Area, item C, Henderson Project CUP.
Thank you. The Henderson Project CUP is sought for a staging site for vehicles and equipment that operate throughout Northwest Arkansas. The site will have about twelve employees who arrive in the morning, park their personal vehicles and then depart in company vehicles. Proposes a sixty-two-by-forty pole barn building and surrounding gravel pad. There's no commerce or administrative tasks taking place on site and it's, it is exclusively serving as a site to park vehicles. And employees get their marching orders. The pole barn will be constructed of typical pole barn material such as wood and metal sheathing. And contain a climate-controlled employee room and bathroom. And the remaining portion of the pole barn is open-air in order to store vehicles. Here is, shown is a sample representative of an existing pole barn somewhere else in the state that the applicant has. I'm not certain if Mr. Henderson is here.
I believe he is.
He is? The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Blake? All right, sir, if you'd like to speak, you come state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, I'm Michael Henderson. Our primary residence is in Clinton, Arkansas, but our local residence is forty-seven fifty-four Clear Creek Boulevard here in Fayetteville. We operate a fiber installation company and we work for Ozarks Electric here in Northwest Arkansas. So our, this, we, we work for three different utilities right now doing that same function. But in Northwest Arkansas, we, we need a place to stage operations, if you will. And so we bought three acres on Southwest Campbell Drive. And, you know, we've looked, looked the county over for, you know, near the city to try to find a, a great place for it. And so this particular site, we looked to see where it kind, our operation would blend. You know, we looked at the neighborhood, the, it's primarily agricultural with pole barns and, and things in pretty much all, you know, the properties surrounding it. So we didn't think that that would be invasive or, or, you know, out of character, if you will. We've, this, this property, we just bought it in October. It was primarily cleared already. We've been in discussion with our adjacent property owner, just bought the property too for their primary residence. And we have, have been in discussion with him on, as they're developing their site, then we can work with some of the equipment. So we're doing a lot of cost-sharing things, you know, joint electricity access, things of that nature. So we've been in contact with our adjacent property owner and he knows what we're doing and I know what he's, he's doing. So we're both familiar with, with the operation. It's kind of a low-key, as, as Mr. Chapman explained, our employees pretty much will come in, get in our vehicles, then go out throughout the Ozarks Electric system, install fiber, come back in at the end of the day. They pretty much work, you know, four days a week. So we've got about a dozen employees right now. Six trucks. We don't have anything heavy. We're not having materials delivered into. Customers won't be reporting to this site. It's truly a place to have a small office for the guys to come in, get their, their drop assignments, go out for the day, come back in. So we, we don't have any expectations of any evasiveness, huge commercial traffic, no big trucks, anything like that for this operation. So for that, we, we thought it was a non-residential application, but because, we wanted to make sure, we went through the whole process that we should, you know, to make sure we've covered all the bases and everybody's, you know, it's, it's gone through the whole purview process to, to make sure everything is in compliance. So that's the reason for the application.
Yeah, I discussed the project with Mr. Henderson before he applies. And the only reason he's doing this, so he doesn't have like down the road, like has to go through any, any problems with the neighbor. So like he's coming up front to say like that's mostly is gonna be like a truck depot for like his business, it's gonna be in and out. Like there is no employees staying, there is no, no deliveries, no like heavy deliveries, no employees staying. I mean, no, nothing else that like really resembles a complete business. But to be a good like neighbor, he is applying for a condition use permit just to be on the safe side.
Is there any maintenance gonna be happening at this point?
Any what?
Maintenance, maintenance of the trucks or anything?
Well, other than, you know, cleaning, doing, you know, they, they don't do any, we don't do anything like truck overhauls or any, you know.
Changing oil.
No, we, we, we take everything, these are fiber technicians, they're not mechanics. At, at times I wish we had a mechanic because mechanics are very expensive when you do take a piece of equipment to them. But things, you know, trucks go to oil change, you know, truck dealers and stuff that, and, and the equipment are ditch which are Vermeer. And we take those to ditch which are Vermeer for maintenance. So that's out of, you know, I'm a financial guy by background, forty years with the electric utility industry. And so, you know, maintenance, that's totally out of my knowledge base. So it's strictly a glorified parking area for, and staging for our operations.
Do, do you have a time horizon on how long this is gonna continue here or anything?
Well, I hope as long as Ozarks is, is signing up new customers, then we'll have a need to be here. But you, you know, that's, you, you never know. But we, we plan to, we, we plan to make the investment, you know, in the building and, and making sure we have a, you know, we, we buy primarily new equipment because we want, you know, our reputation. We want to have a really good professional look so that our guys are out in the community working. And so that's, that's who we are.
What about the rest of the property? You have any plans for it?
No, we, we plan to develop where we, you know, where we have the, the footprint for the building and then for the parking area. We'll have a place for we're putting the, the septic system in that will go in. It's already been, you know, tested and approved. The rest of it, we will try to leave as much of the natural vegetation and forestry area in place as, as that currently exists. It provides shelter, it provides kind of a screening too for the operation from.
Parking the, the equipment, the trucks inside or outside?
No, they will be parked outside on the gravel. We, we, the reason for the pole set, pole barn structure is in the event that you come in and it's raining or something and you need to do something under, out of the weather, it gives them a place to get out of the weather to, you know, to, to load the trucks or to, you know, do things like that. So. But that would be primarily parked on, on the exterior. Well, I do appreciate you and would request that we get a, a positive vote.
All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience want to address this particular issue? You state your name and address, please, sir.
Scott McElroy, one oh two three one Southwest Campbell. We, my wife and I just finished construction on our forever home. I heard that phrase used earlier tonight. We looked for that property for three and a half years, you know, tried to check every box to make sure we were going to the right place. And early last year, the city of Greenland, and as I'm sure you guys are aware, all of the land, well, four hundred acres of land that is north and also west of the subject property is city of Greenland. All of that property was rezoned as residential estates. And, you know, consistent with how Greenland defines residential estates is it's, it's a kind of a combination of residential and agri with larger minimum lot sizes. And it fit very well with, you know, what we wanted to build and how we wanted to live. There are others who have made that same decision, actually our daughter and son-in-law have a, have a home in that same area under construction. And this is all immediately north and west of the subject property. So our concern is, you know, in, in that four hundred acre area certainly, but also even the county area surrounding the property is, is zoned residential agricultural. So clearly, we're concerned with land use compatibility. We're concerned with the property valuation that too often results from incompatibilities like that. And I know there are others that have some other concerns that are even closer to the subject property than we are. But I won't speak for them. I'll, I'll, I'll give them that opportunity. Our biggest concern is property valuation considerations and, you know, being inconsistent with the, the land use that's been identified for that, for that proximate area, really all the way, all the way north to the Hog Valley, Hog Valley RV, which is what, like a half a mile to the north. And that, that's really the primary point that I wanted to make to the board tonight.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I can get up.
I'll bring it to you.
My name is Chris Martin. I live at one oh two four five Southwest Campbell. I am directly across the street from the construction that's going on, that has been going on for quite some time now. I went over today because there wasn't any work going on, which is highly unusual. And there's three houses that's immediately affected by this place, plus I can see it from my place. I understand it's a pole barn. It's out in the country. It was deemed non-commercial property, I believe. Scott could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I'm the only one that has fifteen acres out there that is commercial property. The runoff of the water, we've heard all this about the runoff of water. I got pictures on my phone. There's hardly any trees still standing on the property he's talking about. All that water runs down into a ditch that runs down into a culvert that runs directly into my hay field. I got one cutting the hay last year because of all the, the water running off, off of the, the ditches and stuff. The effect of a commercialized business out there. One of the neighbors is a night nurse. I believe he has custody of his own kids. There's another neighbor that's just right behind the property. Then Scott and Mark. I can't speak for Mark or anybody else really. But I don't know of anybody that's excited about having fiber optic people come out there. And if anybody knows anything about fiber optic, well, it don't break down between eight o'clock in the morning and four-thirty in the afternoon. There's a lot of nighttime stuff. And like I said, I got pictures on the phone. And where the property is and the driveways are that come in and out of the property are on blind curves. And we have a lot of bicycle riders that ride that road for races and such. And tractors going up and down the road because it's all, you know, I'm surrounded by four hundred acres of farmland. And I just don't think it's a good idea, especially with the water drainage into mine. I missed my first cutting last year. Well, of course, I was in hospital, but they couldn't get in to cut mine because of all the water eroding off. And I, I, you know, there's no, no trespassing signs. So I, I went up there today and they've already got the pad cut. They've done all this work. And to me, I thought that they had to come here and get permission from y'all before they could go ahead and get their CPU to do anything. And I guess that's all I got to say at the time.
Thanks. Sorry, I was trying to cut that off. So anyway, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Kramer. My wife and I, we own the property at ten two hundred Southwest Campbell. We bought it just about a year and a half ago to hopefully build a home on it this next year. We, we bought that property. We looked at a lot of different places. We bought that property because we liked the location. We liked the area. We liked the fact that we were gonna be out somewhat in the country with not neighbors right next to us. We didn't want to be in an area where there was gonna be any kind of business. And just really, honestly, if I'd have known that this was even gonna be an option, we probably wouldn't have bought the property. So I'm, I'm definitely opposed to this. I think if you are gonna allow this to be approved, I would ask, I'm, I'm just to the north of him. I would ask, I'm, I'm just to the north of him, I am an adjacent landowner and Mr. Henderson has had no communication with me whatsoever, so I don't know if he's talking about the neighbor next to him, but, um, I would think that he would have communication with both adjacent landowners. I do know Erval Fraley, that I bought the property from, that lives right back up behind him, um, he has already begun to make arrangements to do some kind of privacy to his home, so I think that if, if you're gonna approve this, I would ask for a condition that he has to construct some kind of a, a privacy fence, I would prefer an eight, ten-foot cedar fence, some kind of privacy where I'm going to be, um, I'm not going to be looking into a, a pole barn and business and trucks running in and out at whatever time, and that, uh, it's, it's more of a place, it, we're going to build our forever home also, and so I would appreciate the consideration that this really is an area for homes, small farms, um, not, not for a business, uh, of this nature, and, um, so that's all I've got to say, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? All right, to the board.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Henderson, are you an employee of Ozarks Electric?
I am not, I'm a retiree, I retired last year from, from Arkansas Electric Cooperative.
But this is going to be an Ozarks Electric facility?
It's not.
Oh, it's?
We, we are a contractor for Ozarks Electric.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Mr. Henderson, can you address the hours?
Can I address the what?
Their concern of the hours.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Uh, first of all, the, the property valuation, uh, for what we pay for the property is to make everybody's property value go up, uh, it was quite expensive, uh, to purchase that land, a lot more than you would ever imagine it would be for parking vehicles on. The water runoff, you know, right now, it's just a, a hillside that comes down and, and runs into the road ditches and then, you know, wherever the road ditches take you, when we put a parking platform, there will at least be a landing spot for water to hit and have some absorption before it goes down the hill like it, uh, currently does. So we think our plan will actually improve water management for that piece of property, at least for that three acres. After hours repairs, we, we don't do those, I mean, that we're not a, it's, it's not, we're not the utility, the utility, Ozarks Go manages all of that, we're just a new installation drops company for them, so our guys aren't here to even be on call, you know, for, for Ozarks Electric and for, so you won't have that after hour, uh, traffic that they're concerned about, so that will be happening off of the Weddington Drive Ozarks Go facility. Work already performed, we haven't, we, we haven't touched our land. We bought it in October, the trees had already been removed from that, I, I think somebody came in and forced, you know, did the timber cutting off of it or whatever, but they had mulched that, and so we literally haven't done any work on that property other than call a surveyor out to come out and mark the corners so that we knew exactly where the property lines were. So that's to the extent of any work being done or any, we haven't touched that at all, so we're waiting for this process to be, to go through, uh, its course of, of action. Now, the property owner, Mr. Sauerbauer, adjacent to us, he is building his, he does have a pad built for his house, he's building his, his forever home there, uh, so they are putting in the driveway and building a pad, pushing trees, and they've got, so they, they are doing things, so, but don't confuse that with our property, we haven't, we haven't gone forward ahead of this process at all.
All right.
So, um, for residential standpoint, uh, for Mr. Kramer, uh, we, I, I didn't know you to contact, I would have been happy to, to contact you, I didn't, I didn't know, you know, that, who, who owned the property next to us, uh, but we'd be happy to put up a fence, you know, to your liking if that's, if that's what you want, we want you to, just like, uh, Mr. Sauerbauer, that's his forever home, we want him, we want him to have a, the home he wants and in the environment that he wants, so, you know, we talked about yard lights, think that, you know, we, if, if they don't want a yard light, a security light, we will put one up, we don't currently have one at our existing facility in, in Bamburran County, uh, but, you know, it's, you want it to be safe and secure, so we will have a gate at the driveway, uh, but if he wants to put a privacy fence along your, our fence line, I'd be happy to do that too, so, because we, I want, you know, I want you to be happy too, we don't want to be invasive at all.
So can we, uh, like, planning can happily add like, uh, privacy fence as a condition, and we can update this on the website as well, if it's okay.
Hey, question just for clarification again, I know you stated this earlier in reference to go through the process. But I mean, if he buys property there, puts a gravel parking lot down and a pole barn up out in residential or agricultural area out there, he didn't need a CUP. So why is he doing the CUP?
It's because like the trucks, they have like, uh, they have like a, the company name on them and they're going to be in and out, but, uh, so as I said, like, so the, he doesn't have to go down the road like to explain to the neighbors that that's the project and they might come and like and complain about it, so he's trying to do due diligence before like beginning, but basically it's a barn and, yep.
And we, we, in our application, we showed all the barns and the properties around us where there were already commercial projects, you know, there was two new commercial buildings that were just built across the, you know, kind of diagonal across from, uh, Mr. Kramer's property, uh, at the corner there, there's two that looks like they're new, uh, so we didn't feel like we were out of character a, at all in what we were doing, but we did want to make sure that we, we went through the right process.
Anybody else got any other questions?
I've got a question of, I guess, staff.
Yes, sir.
If something happens and he decides to leave, what can he do with that property? Is, is, it's not going to, his approval of this facility is not going to carry forward with any, anybody else that comes in there and tries to do the same thing or something?
No, it's the same as like any condition use permit, it, um, it runs with the land as long as the use is the same, so like if he decided like I don't want to do it anymore and he wants to sell it, it goes back to agriculture, a single family residential like.
But he could sell it to somebody doing the same thing and they could.
If he, if he keeps the same use as it is without any changes, I would, that's why we always say like any changes or any development on it has to go through the planning board again, so if it stays the same, exactly the same as being approved with the condition yes, any changes, no.
And there wouldn't be such dramatic changes to the property that somebody couldn't come in behind us and say we want to build a home here, you know, because we're not cutting into the, into the hillside to make a home, you know, a plant, a, a foundation for a home like our neighbor is, so if somebody could come in, it'd still almost be, other than the pole barn, which can be removed easily, it'd still be pretty flexible as far as future use.
And I don't believe he's adding any impervious like surfaces, that's why it's all those gravel, so for easy.
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't store fuel or anything like that there, you know, you won't have fuel tanks and all, any of that thing for leakage, we don't do any of that either, we, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I'll bring it to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Henner, uh, the Henderson Project CUP.
Got a motion?
I'll make a second.
You got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Phil, sir, passes four zero. Next section, land development hearings counting item D, Colvin Minor Subdivision.
Thank you, um, the Colvin Minor Subdivision is sought to split a parent tract consisting of about four and a half acres into three lots, one point five acre, one point five acre and one point five acre in size, more or less, and it's on, uh, Wildcat Creek Boulevard and planning has no technical concerns.
Okay, any questions for Blake? Assistant here, does he want to speak? Anybody in the audience want to speak to this?
Assistant is here.
Oh, the applicant is here, does he want to speak? Oh, is that, are you the applicant? Oh, sorry. Representative, okay, either one, all right, if you'll state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Renee Bybee, two oh seven Center Street Prairie Grove, I represent Mr. Paul Colvin, for this address, it's thirty-four ninety-four Wildcat Creek Boulevard, just simply splitting three lots from four and a half acres, um, it has road frontage, the only thing that I noted in the staff report today is it's served by Tawny Town Water, not WWA, so whatever those conditions are that were online should be stricken because we've already got our water taps.
Okay, Tariq?
That's it.
Any questions for?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would, uh, on tract four A, there's a building pad, is there a structure been on that previously, is there a structure under construction on that, what is that building pad on that side?
Um, it is just a new building pad, Mr. Colvin had thought that maybe he wanted to build a barnumium there, um, he never built, he just built the pad. Um, we had Linda Mayo come out and do septic, um, design, well, septic test, and then we had, um, Corbett come out and do septic design for all three lots, and so there's nothing built there, it's just raw property with a pad bonus.
No septic system on that?
There are no septic systems currently.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
And for the water provider, like recently, they changed like the, uh, the boundaries, so like by the time we were like doing this, it was.
Okay.
Actually, yeah.
Got you, all right, thank you, ma'am. Now, anybody in the audience want to speak? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of the Colvin Minor Subdivision as stated by staff comments.
Motion.
I'll make a second.
Got a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, ma'am. Last item, Farmington Planning Area, Bethel Elm Final Subdivision.
Thank you, this is simply a final subdivision for Bethel Elm at the intersection of, uh, Bethel Blacktop and Little Elm, uh, the subdivision consists of twelve buildable lots, um, planning has no concerns.
All right, any questions for Blake? Advocate want to speak, are there representative? Okay, anybody in the audience want to speak to this? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of the final subdivision for Bethel Elm as proposed.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, brings us down to other business, division of current development, Plank Department, upcoming board members. January twelfth is the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Sam?
Yes, sir, and thank you so much for being, uh, so patient with us like all over those years and like we do appreciate you, wish you all the best, uh, with whatever you're gonna do in the future.
I'm gonna come sit in there, I'm gonna come sit out there and be a pain.
Be a heckler?
I'm gonna come out there and be a pain is what I'm gonna do.
Do we need, do we need to adjourn before like saying anything?
And they'll give me, they'll give me three minutes and I'm gonna take every bit of it.
Hey, adjourn it first, yeah, so the next meeting is going to be January twelfth and the following one is going to be February twenty-third, and hopefully we'll have like new, uh, appointed like members so we can have like our seven at least, so we can move forward.
Okay, before we adjourn, I got one, one thing, and I just thought about this the whole time here because, you know, the, the thing that I see here, that the years that I've spent on this board and the timeframe and so forth, I love the way the quorum does it, about how they give them three minutes and it's a flat thirty minutes on that public do that, what is the process, and I'm, I'm proposing guys, but I mean, because you know it can get long, I'm proposing, what is the process to where that you could actually make that the same as how the quorum handles theirs, that when you get to public comment on a particular issue, you know, they're allowed three minutes, ten minutes if, or no, it's not even ten minutes, it's a three minute per person, or it's a flat thirty minutes? What's the process to get to that?
We do, I, I honestly don't know exactly if this is, uh, the bylaws or something, it has to be as an ordinance, but we do, if you see that like hanging piece of paper, that's the, uh, the rules of conduct without like our planning board and we always say like three minutes to ten minutes and like we like to have this strict, but I know the thirty minutes like doesn't go beyond the thirty minutes as, uh, public comments, that's different.
Well, you know, it's like I'm sitting here on, on the Henderson thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, you had twelve people that spoke, so by the time those twelve people spoke, and if I gave them three minutes and some of them I gave more, you know, you're forty-five minutes to fifty minutes into that process, so, and I understand their concerns and, and want the, to do those and so forth, but are we not allowed as a board to make a motion if we wanted to, to move that, to make a motion to say going forth?
I will have to.
During public comment, we move it to three minutes, thirty minute max?
I will have to consult like with our like, uh, county attorney to make sure that like something we can do, but, yep.
That was, that's just a thought process of, you know, the years that, the years that I've spent on this that I could see that being a positive.
I'll bring this to attention and see if we can limit the time, the public comments too, or like we can make a motion to move to three minutes or ten minutes and like we can stop you and give you out, so.
I hope y'all are okay with me bringing that forth, but I just think that's a, I think that's a positive for you, if, if you can get it done, it'd be a positive for y'all in the future meetings, so, anyway.
I appreciate your professionalism and your guidance, I'm new to the board, uh, I really appreciate your guidance in, in the way you handle yourself.
Right, you're welcome, Lauren's gonna do a great job, y'all got a great board, I think, I think we all understand we need to possibly move one, Sam, going forward, you know, so, um, I think that, you know, once you do that, I mean, and the thing about it is, this is a thankless job, you know, and I'm gonna tell you, even, even in the, you know, going through the Quorum Court meetings, I mean, that's a, that's a thankless job even in their elected officials, it's hard, I mean, you sit, you sit in those, you sit in those seats out there, you sit in these seats right here, and it becomes difficult sometimes to, I know we're, we're, we're asked to be a part of this and make yes and no answers, but sometimes it's difficult.
And I also expect a higher standard of profession was a broad elected officials too, that was embarrassing earlier.
So, anyway, all right.
Well, I would like to say, yeah, um, I also am new to the group, uh, very much appreciate your leadership, you've done a great job as chair, uh, it is a thankless job that we do get compensated for, but not, not greatly, but, uh, did want to recognize you and acknowledge the job that you've done, being good stewards of the county's funds, we didn't spend a lot of money, we do have a plaque to give you
Is that paperweight, baby?
To commemorate this moment, and, and again, we do very much appreciate your leadership.
I appreciate that, that's very, that's very nice.
Leaving very large shoes to fill.
Hey, if you, if you can find like the, uh, typos in it, I'll pay you money.
That's it, be you, Sam, you, the typos are for you, yep, there you go, I appreciate it.
You've, you've done a great job, we, I've learned a lot from you and I look forward to, to carrying on the tradition, so.
I will say this, I appreciate, appreciate y'all's service and continuing to carry the board forward, you know, with, with your appointment, so.
Well, I appreciate like Philip for his like experience as well, he's gonna be a great help for everyone.
Well, absolutely, I mean, you know, the, the bearing backgrounds that are here, you know, those are always positives, so it's always nice to have somebody that's, you know, done real estate, somebody that's done engineering, and somebody that's done banking and this and that, construction, I mean, you know, it gives a little variance to everything, so yeah, I think that makes it good.
And then you throw a girl at it.
So anyway, but, uh, anyway, thanks again.
Isn't that a Reba McIntyre song?
Uh, maybe.
Or Does It Broke?
Adjourn.
Uh, yeah, this meeting is adjourned.
First, second?
Yes.